I'd like to call the Laurel Highlands School District Board of Education regular meeting to order. I'd like to have a silent meditation and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Kim.
Mrs. Beal?
Right then.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Here.
Mr. Danana?
Here.
Mr. Lys?
Here.
Mr. Colson?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Meadows?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Any questions, or anyone else?
Thank you, Kim. I'd like to have a motion for the adoption of the agenda with tabling SST3A and remove F8A.
I'll second.
Proper motions been made in second, and any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of Laurel Highlands stakeholders, is there anybody here that would like to speak tonight on any agenda item before we get to it, when we get to it, or present? Thank you. I have a motion for the approval of the minutes for a regular meeting of June 19th, 2024, and a special meeting of July 1st, 2024.
Any motion?
Second.
Proper motion been made in second, and any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the attendance records of committee meetings and work sessions, it'll be a work session of July 5th, 2024?
I'll second.
Proper motion been made in second, and any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is this going to be televised any time other than livestreamed?
Yes.
Just livestreamed, or?
It's livestreamed, it's on YouTube.
It's on YouTube also, okay. Superintendent's report, Dr. Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Just a reminder that anyone who has missed kindergarten registration for the 2024-2025 school year can still register online as soon as possible. Visit our website at www.lhsd.org and click on the kindergarten registration or scan one of the QR codes on the signs that are throughout the community. Thank you so much for registering in advance, we look forward to welcoming you and your child to our LH family. And if there's anyone out there that has not registered, please make sure you try to get into one of the elementaries and get that done as soon as possible. Thank you. But also, tonight I'd like to recognize Mr. Jason Johns for his leadership and superb oversight of our ESRS audit reviews. He's not here this evening, I don't think, but he needs to be recognized for that. We've gone through numerous reviews for our audits to make sure that we are spending the money that we got for COVID the right way and we're following the right parameters. And he's done a really nice job of making sure that that has happened. And the auditors that are reviewing this to prepare us for our audit should we get one are very pleased with the oversight that has happened there. And it's taken a lot of work and a lot of effort, so I want to make sure that he's recognized for that good work. I'd also like to thank you to an anonymous donor who delivered to our office yesterday the LifeVac anti-choking devices, and they donated one for each cafeteria. So we will be working on, or with, our nurses and the cafeteria staff to have those in the cafeteria should we need them. That's one of those things you hope you never have to use or have. However, they were kind enough to donate one for each building, so we really appreciate that, so thank you to that anonymous donor. I'd also like to formally thank the Community Foundation of Fayette County for their scholarship support of LH students. Most recently, they recognized actually your daughter, Mr. DeAndrea, at their last meeting, and we appreciate them and what they do. They give a lot of scholarships to our students and we're very appreciative of them. I just want to make sure that they know that we appreciate that. The next thing I would like to do is something we do every year, or at least when we have them, is our teachers that have achieved tenure. And if I call your name and you're one of the staff members that's in the crowd, please stand. But I have a, I know everyone that's on my list is probably not here, but I would like to have you stand and be recognized if you are here. Ms. LeAnn Sperry. Brianna McGala. Anna Barclay. Emma Gasty. Lou Bryce. Abigail Windrove Thomas. Courtney Radcliffe. Beth Sheehan. Sarah Zaloski. Kelly Collins. Christina Novotny. Curtis Chapman. And Zeke Zelich. I'd like to give all these teachers a round of applause for successfully, and their success in achieving tenure. Congratulations. And one of the things I like to do is to, I make sure that we send out to them, I ask two questions of all teachers that are achieving tenures, all staff members. And the questions are, please describe why you became a teacher and what do you like most about working in a Laurel Highlands school district? And I'll speak to those who are here this evening. In regards to Ms. Sperry, she said when asked, please describe why you became a teacher. "Our friend encouraged me to work as an emergency substitute teacher for Laurel Highlands in 2010, and I quickly recognized that I loved being in a classroom and working with children. I quickly enrolled in the teacher preparation program and graduated with my master's in elementary education in December of 2013." Ms. Sperry, we're glad to have you, congratulations. And give me a minute as I go through and get the ones that are here. Ms. Gasty. "I became a teacher because I want to play a positive role in shaping our future. My students are our future, and no matter what type of home environment they come from, I want them to know that they are loved and safe with me and they do anything that they can, or that they can do anything that they set their mind to." That's when it's not here, but I hit the wrong note. But anyway, congratulations to her also. Ms. Collins. "I became a teacher because I wanted to feel like I was doing something for a greater good. Becoming a teacher provided me with the opportunity to impact a significant number of lives, and I feel that I truly have a purpose in my career." Congratulations, Ms. Collins. I know I'm taking a little bit of time, but I didn't know who was going to be here and who wasn't. My other two, I'm gonna have to get back to y'all on that next board meeting, and I may have left them in my office, and I apologize. But I went through all of these and I read them all, and it's nice to hear the things that they have to say about the staff that they work with and about the reasoning behind they became a teacher. And that's what it's all about at the end of the day. We do a lot of things here in the district that are administrative, routine, but at the end of the day, it's about the passion you have for teaching students and being in the profession that we are in. And once again, I'd like to congratulate all of those who received tenure tonight. Glad to have you. That's the end of my report, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you. Good job. Academic Foundation, Mr. Kolesik?
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. The Academic Foundation will have their first meeting for the 24-25 school year on Monday, August 19th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Comprehensive Strategy, Strategic Plan, Board Policy and Public Relations Committee, Mr. Danana?
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. I have nothing to add to this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Danana. Curriculum Committee, Mrs. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. C1 is informational. Opening activities for the 2024-2025 school year found in Exhibit A. C2, I'd like to put in the form of a motion, approval of Mustang Online Learning Academy class list, as well as high school and middle school curriculum guide for the 2024-2025 school year. These documents are uploaded to our website for review.
Proper motion been made in second, and any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. DeAndrea, can I interrupt you?
Oh, yes.
I did have one other item under my report. PSBA recognizes ongoing schools' board service and long-term contributions for individuals who serve public education in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and they noticed, they notified us that there will be a certificate of appreciation for yourself for five years of service, so thank you for what you've done here.
C3 is informational. The Mini-Mine Mustangs are partnering with PIC and other local districts to help get all incoming kindergarten students in the area ready for kindergarten. The Kindergarten Rocks event will take place at the LeMond Furnace Head Start Center from 4:30 to 6:30 on August 15th, 2024. We encourage all incoming kindergarten students to join us for a great, fun-filled education evening. That concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mrs. Conway.
Mrs. Conway, may I add something to your report? I would also like to recognize and congratulate Mr. Jeremy Bryson, our finance teacher, and his students, who won the National Financial Literacy Competition sponsored by Intuit for Education. The students participated in the Intuit Hour of Finance Challenge Tournament, earning more than 26,000 points, more than other students, and they won first place. And because of that, they won an event here at our school worth up to $50,000. And that's a testament to our staff and what they do and how effective they are in what they do. I'd like to congratulate Jeremy Bryson and also Mr. Randy Miller for his input and bringing that to the district. And it's something that financial literacy, you think, you know, as we get to be adults, we know how to balance a checkbook, we know what it is to pay rent, we know what it is to go buy groceries. Some of our students, and more than you think, do not. And I always give the example, my freshman year in college, we, I played football, so we arrived at camp early, and my roommate, a defensive end, came to me one day with his checkbook, and he looked at me and he said, "I mean, they're telling me I have no more money, but I have all these checks left." And he couldn't understand why there's no money there, you know, and he was serious. So, financial literacy is important, and congratulations, Mr. Miller, congratulations to Mr. Bryson and his students, good work. Thank you, Mrs. Conway.
Okay. Buildings and Grounds Committee, Mr. Meadows?
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. I'd like to thank Mr. Galena for his report. I'd also like to thank Mr. Galena and his staff for all the hard work this summer, getting the buildings looked, and Mr. DeAndrea and I were discussing out in the hallway how wonderful everything looks. Your hard work is marked on notice. That concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Finance, Budget, and Taxation Committee, Mr. Raymond?
Thank you. I made a motion to approve the payment of reconciliation towards Summer Report Exhibit B.
Our promotion's been made in second, and any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Colson?
Yes.
Mr. Lys?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes. Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve payment of bills in Exhibit C.
Second. Proper motion been made in second, and any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Lys?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Colson?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve statement of D O B bills in Exhibit E.
Our promotion's been made in second, and any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Colson?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Lys?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Best report Exhibit E is informational. Make a motion to approve the student active and athletic reports in Exhibit F.
Our promotion's been made in second, and any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the federal report Exhibit G.
Our promotion's been made in second, and any questions on the motion? All those in favor, roll call, Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Lys?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Danana?
Yes.
Mr. Colson?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the approval of the Tran with subset bank. That's.
One interruption, that's a tan, please remove the R, it's T-A-N, that's our fault.
Proper motion's been made in second, and any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Lys?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Colson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
F8.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond. Health, Nutrition, and Foods Committee, Mrs. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. FS1, I'd like to put in the form of a motion, the cafeteria report found in Exhibit H.
Second. Our promotion's been made in second, and any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
FS2 is informational. The Laurel Highlands School District will be participating in a community eligibility program for the 2024-2025 school year. All students will receive a free breakfast and lunch. Adult meals will be $4.75 for lunch and $2.85 for breakfast. That concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mrs. Conway. Security, Safety, and Transportation Committee, Mrs. Beal?
When it approved, the district has for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second. Our promotion's been made in second, and any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Two way, approved the first bus driver's list and minimum traffic driver's list for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second. Our promotion's been made in second, and any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Three A.
That's tabled. Three A's tabled.
I have a question. Okay. I want to ask you a question. Talking about the buses, are we ready? Are all the buses ready for the kids to be picked up?
To my knowledge, they are. We're having a meeting next week with the bus company to that exact point. So, that question, along with an agenda of others, we're going to run through in regards to some of the things we talked about in our work session on being on time, making sure that we're getting students to the front door of the school buildings in time for instruction. All that's going to be discussed with them next week. We have a meeting set with them to talk about those items.
Do you know when the meeting can be?
Not yet, I do not. I know it's scheduled for sometime next week.
So the close to school, I think it should have been done, see?
Well.
Now, board members can attend the meeting?
I have no problem. I'll let everyone know when I know the date and time and where it's going to be.
Mr. Raymond?
My question is why ESRS three and eight was banned?
Correct. We received a phone call today from a first student asking why they were not extended with the courtesy that another transportation provider was extended and at least had an option to provide a, or, I mean, an extension proposal. I called Mr. DeAndrea and asked him what he would like to do here based on what they're telling us. I figured it'd be a good idea to table it until at least next month.
They were offered. They got an extension previously.
Yes, they did.
So they got that in a month?
Yes, they did.
So they, will we provide a number?
The next question I asked was, I need a timeline letting me know exactly when they're going to have something. I'm not going to let this stretch out for two, three, four months. I gave Mr. Barron a directive to talk to them about having something by our next board meeting.
If nothing is provided by the next board meeting?
Then we go back to where we are right now.
Okay.
And I didn't have enough time to call everybody when I got the word on that today.
Understood, I was just asking.
And the other reason I said to-
And I actually give background information on that in my mailing that I send, my Friday Focus to you guys, but now that you know, I mean, that's the reasoning behind that.
And the reason I went along with that is because if we afford one company the opportunity, we can afford the other company, and we'll see where the numbers come in. If it doesn't, then we just put it out for an RFP then. And then, but again, I agree with you, one month is more than sufficient. Actually, it'll be more than a month because our meeting in September will be third week, and here we are in first week, so.
And I would prefer that not happen at the board session?
No, we'll have a committee meeting just to do that.
Right.
Yes.
This is going to be their second extension?
If it's something that the board feels like you want to approve, it will be, yes.
Yet they've had one.
A four.
Past, right?
Yes.
And this will be their second?
Yes, it would be.
In a board, you'll make the decision who attends the meeting?
No, everyone should, it's a committee meeting, anyone can attend the meeting.
Public can attend the meeting. It'll be advertised.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay.
Human Resource Committee, Mr. Kolesik?
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Under P1, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve the substitute teachers for 2024-2025 school year found in Exhibit K.
Second. Our promotion's been made in second, and any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
P2 is informational. Mr. Jeffrey Jordan will be returning to his position at the high school at the beginning of the 2024-2025 school year. P3, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve tenure for teachers found in Exhibit L.
Second. Our promotion's been made in second, and any questions on that motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under P4, request for retirements, other leaves, resignations, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve sabbatical leave for professional employee A for restoration of health for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second. Our promotion's been made in second, and any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Still under P4, under B, approved sabbatical leave for professional employee B for restoration of health for the first semester of the 2024-2025 school year.
Second. Our promotion's been made in second, and any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under P5, I'd like to put in the form of a motion for the selection of middle school nurse, Ms. Jessica Lawell, for terms of the collective bargaining agreement. Year two salary, step 12 of the current collective bargaining agreement.
Our promotion's been made in second, and any questions on the motion?
That's Jessica Lawell. Jessica Lawell.
Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Colson?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Danana?
Yes.
Mr. Lys?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
No.
Seven days, one day.
Under P6, I'd like to put in the form of a motion for the selection of Jody Johnson as middle school emotional support teacher for terms of the collective bargaining agreement. Year three salary, step 11 of the current collective bargaining agreement.
Our promotion's been made in second, and any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Colson?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Magan?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Lys?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Aye.
Under P7, I'd like to put in the form of a motion for the selection of high school life skills autistic support teacher Madison Adams for terms of collective bargaining agreement. Does not mention, no step listed, your salary.
Mr. Sinzo?
Yes.
Did we agree there?
Step one.
Step one, that's what I thought. Step one, or the first step of the collective bargaining agreement salary schedule?
13, I think.
That's it, I mean, the beginning year salary step.
So I'd like to put that in the form of a motion to approve.
Proper motion's been made in second, and any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Colson?
Yes.
Mr. Danana?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Lys?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Durian?
Yes.
Aye.
Under P8, I'd like to put in the form of a motion for the selection of middle school science teacher Amanda Noski for terms of the collective bargaining agreement. Year two salary, step 12 of the current collective bargaining agreement.
Our promotion's been made, any questions on the motion? I just wanted to say that I was at the interviews, she was just phenomenal. She made me want to go back to science school, science class again. Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Colson?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Lys?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Magan?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Aye, aye.
Under P nine, I'd like to put in the form of a motion for approved permission for the following individuals to be placed as long-term substitutes in the positions indicated, and those are found in Exhibit M.
Second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Klesik?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Genetek?
Yes.
Mr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Aye, aye.
Motion carries.
Under P ten, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve substitute employees for support personnel for the 2024-2025 school year found in Exhibit K.
Second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? One abstention?
Under P eleven, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to accept the resignation of Ms. Gina Miller, cafeteria helper at the middle school, effective immediately. Her position will be posted. Ms. Miller has five years of dedicated service to the district.
Second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Miller, for her service. We appreciate everything she's done. Okay. Under P twelve, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve the paraprofessional update for the 2024-2025 school year found in Exhibit M. Second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And that concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea. Thank you, Mr. Klesik. Athletic and Extracurricular Activities Committee, Mr. Raymond?
Make a motion to accept the financial support boost for student exhibit E.
I'll second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve its awards awards in exhibit B.
I'll second. Our promotion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Klesik?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Genetek?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.